This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, here we go. Welcome to the Harwich Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely and is available through remote participation only via GoToMeeting.com. This meeting was going to be live, however, the Board of Selectmen are also holding a meeting at this evening, so the Planning Board meeting will not, will be recorded and rebroadcast for a future time. Our call to order is pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people may gather in place. This meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. I'd like to now take a roll call of members present to determine whether or not we have a call. And we'll go alphabetically. Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Mary Maslowsky.
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Get a full complement this evening. So, we're going to open the public hearing for PB 2020-33, Main Street Stone Horse applicant and owner care of William F. Riley Esquire representative seeks a new use special permit to convert one of the two dormitory buildings, specifically the building known as 868 Route 28, into 22 one-bedroom apartments and to amend the previously approved site plan review special permit granted under section, excuse me, under case PB 2019-13 with additional parking requirement and other waivers. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51.Q, multifamily use, and Section 325-55, Site Plan Review. Property is located at 872 Route 28, MAP 25, parcel 82, and is located in the CH-1 zoning district. Now, we've received the notice from Attorney Riley that this applicant is seeking a continuance to the bed you are meeting at, bedroom 23rd. May I ask a motion to continue this?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Mary. I move that we continue the public hearing for PB 2020-33, Main Street Stone Horse applicant and owner care of William F. Riley Esquire to February 9, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second.
David Harris, second.
I think they're February 23rd.
It is February 23rd, correct.
Not February 23rd.
I'm sorry about that. I'll amend it to February 23, 2021.
And so, I'm assuming we already have that second from Joe. So, why don't we do a roll call vote? Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Mary Maslowsky.
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you. Our second item is the public hearing on, to open a public hearing for PB-2020-34, Cool Change LLC, Alan Harbor Marine applicant and owner care of Rob O'Neil representative, seeks site plan review and use special permit pursuant to Sections 325-55, Section 325-10, Use Table, Paragraph 4.18, and Section 325-1 to construct a 4,102 square foot commercial building for marine use, boat maintenance and repair, and associated parking at property located at 282 Route 28, MAP 12, parcel G2-1 in the CH-1 zoning district. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or representatives to make a presentation to the board.
Okay. My name is Craig LeBlanc. I'm the owner and general manager of Allen Harbor Marine Service here in Harwich Port. I've been with the company since 1998 and have owned the business since 2015. The purpose of this building is primarily for service work in the fall and winter months when we're not able to do work outside due to weather conditions. In the fall, the work done inside here will primarily be shrink wrapping. What we typically do is on nice days, when the wind isn't too strong, we're able to shrink wrap outside and we'll put boats inside to have ready to shrink wrap for rainy days or windy days. Starting in January, we transition over to prep work on customers' boats for the coming season, consisting of detailing, cleaning, bottom painting, checking the operation of the systems on the boat. Each boat that we have in storage comes inside in one to one of the shops for anywhere from three to five days, and we perform the prep work for the coming season, just shrink wrap back on, that group of boats goes outside, and then we bring in another group. It's a continuous cycle. This building will be set up to handle generally six boats at once, depending on size. Having this extra inside space will allow me to keep all of my staff on year-round through the winter as I'm able to just have that much more inside work that we can do that isn't weather-dependent. And that work will continue all the way through early to mid-May, pretty much, and then where all the boats are heading for the water, and as the weather improves, we're able to do more and more outside. So, the summer months won't be certainly as busy for this shop as the fall, winter, and early spring months, but it's going to really help with workload when the weather keeps us, keeps us from working outside.
Very good. Is there anybody else or representative who is going to present to the board?
They're primarily on the call to answer any questions that I'm not able to answer. So, we'll certainly entertain any questions this time, and if I'm not able to answer, I'll defer to one of the other fellows that are on the call.
Well, thank you. I'd like to ask at this time to have our staff comments from the interim town planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, they are requesting two waivers from landscaping and planting, and also curbing and wheel stops. You'll hear a little bit more from me in a moment, from other boards, committees, and departments. The Health Department, a fully compliant septic system, must be approved prior to any building permit issuance. Fire, Police, Water, Highway Department had no issues, comments, or concerns. Conservation has indicated that any work in the FEMA flood zone requires Conservation Commission approval, as this is land subject to coastal storm flowage. It's just a very small quarter of the property. And Engineering did review the plans with me, and he has additional comments that I'll go through. As noted, the town engineer and I met to review the plans and application as submitted on January 5, 2021. At that time, we sent an email to Rob O'Neil, outlining our questions and comments. Revised plans and other information was provided on January 13. Most of our comments and questions have been addressed. However, we do provide the following comments. The two westerly parking spaces nearest the proposed building cannot be used during the hours of operation of the marine use, as these would block access to the three parking spaces at the rear. This could be accomplished with signage and can be made a condition of approval. Also, we still are encouraging that there be only one curb cut, however, because this is a change of use, this would likely need to go before Mass DOT curb cut permit, and this too can be made a condition of approval if so, if the board deemed so. Dimensions for parking spaces are not provided, including the handicap space. If the application states that various dimensions, if applicant states various dimensions would be, this too could be included in the conditions. Curbing is encouraged along the easterly parking area. We understand the desire to minimize curbing due to the boat and trailer access, however, curbing along the easterly side would not impede access. This can be made a condition of approval. The applicant has requested a waiver from landscaping and planting. The town engineer and myself believe that these areas that will not be paved must be green, and therefore, some indication of looming or seeding or low-growing shrubs should be provided. They also did speak with an abutter today, who I believe is on the call, who raised some concerns about, you know, what would be planted to block this building from the residential uses to the north or behind the building. The Zoning Board of Appeals did approve variances for setbacks for the building and parking pursuant to Case 2020-41. The property contains a use easement for parking for the restaurant located to the west of the property, Villa Roma. Can you hold on one second? I'll be right back.
Must be a late UBS delivery.
Sorry, we have a floor heater that is not working properly, and it was making a really loud noise. Again, Villa Roma has parking easement. The parking for each use will be offset by the nature of businesses and business hours between the marine use and the restaurant use. The requested waivers would not be required, provided there is addition, there are conditions imposed, and including the submittal of a landscape plan. At this time, all other requirements of the bylaw appear to have been met. We do recommend a number of reasonable conditions. First, a fully compliant septic system must be approved prior to any building permit issuance. B, any work in the FEMA flood zone requires Conservation Commission approval, as this is subject, the land is subject to coastal storm flowage. C, the two parking spaces on the westerly side of the lot shall be restricted to evening use only. Signage will be installed to indicate said restriction. Third, two parking spaces in the, whoop, I already did that one. D, number four, Cape Cod berm shall be installed along the easterly edge of the parking area and shall be shown on the as-built plan. E, a Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mass DOT, may be required as this is a change of use. Any changes to the entrance to the site as a result of this review shall not require further review from the Planning Board. A copy of the Mass DOT curb cut permit shall be filed with the Planning Office. F, the regular parking spaces shall be nine feet wide by 20 feet in length, and the parking space for disabled persons shall be eight feet wide with a five-foot hatch aisle adjacent and have a length of 20 feet. All signage shall comply with the sign code and building department requirements. All lighting shall comply with the lighting code. I, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a landscape plan shall be submitted to the Planning Office. Excuse me. Any changes to the approved site plan may require additional review and approvals from the Planning Board. K, the decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. And finally, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 400-18G, inspection, certificate of completion, and an as-built plan shall be met. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Greenhough. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Yes, Joe.
Okay. Charlene, one of the first questions I have is, what about, I looked at the plan that they submitted, and it wasn't clear as to the access between the Villa Roma property and this property, because as I understand it, Villa Roma has some rights on this, on this piece of land.
Yes, and if you look at the plan, if you have access to it, I have to grab my copy here. At the Route 28 entrance, there is an existing, excuse me, I can't read it off to that. Hold, give me a second. There is an existing, I can't read it off to that. Hold, give me a second. Actually, Rob, maybe you can answer that. Rob O'Neil. There is an existing lawn area, landscaped area, Joe, between Villa Roma and this parking lot, and it runs.
I know. I went up and looked at it.
Right, so we submitted a new traffic plan, C-06, that shows how traffic would flow from in-between Villa Roma and this new parking lot. So, I don't think anything would impede on the traffic coming from Villa Roma and accessing the parking lot during off-hours of the Allen Harbor.
And you, and you have access from 28 directly into your parking lot?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And is my memory any good? You also own a piece of property across the street, don't you, where you store boats?
No, that's further down 28 on the corner.
Okay, all right. Down by the, down by the church. I know what you mean. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
This is Dave Harris. I have a question for, I'm Charlene, Mr. Chairman. The accessible space that is just south of the corner of your building, who does that accessible space serve?
That serves the marina use.
It does not serve the restaurant then?
It is not intended to serve the restaurant. I mean, it can during, you know, business hours for the restaurant, but it is, this site is required to have such a parking space for this building.
When that accessible space is in use, that blocks the small garage door to your new building. How do you, you know, if that accessible space is being used by a customer or an employee, how do you suppose, propose to handle the accessibility need?
Well, the three parking spaces that are in the northern part of the property, hopefully you can see those on the plan, there's three spaces that are to the left of the northwest corner of the building. Those are intended to be for the restaurant staff that would be there during the day before they open.
That wasn't my question.
Craig, if I might, I believe what he's talking about is the, the disabled parking space is located for your proposed building in front of the easterly garage door.
That's correct, correct.
How you would access that if there is a vehicle parked there?
Well, that, that space would be, is handicap parking for my building, not for Villa Roma.
I didn't say it was for Villa. I said if an excess, if a disabled driver parks in that, be an employee or a patron of the marina, how do you propose to use that small garage door when it's blocked by the car parked in the accessible space?
If there won't be any marina customers coming to this building, for the most part, it'll just be my employees that are working inside the building. So, when my employees are parked there, I'll have them parked in the spaces that won't interfere with the moving boats in and out of that door.
Are you saying that you're never going to employ a disabled driver?
Craig, this is, I may chime in for a minute here. Mr. Harris, this is Justin Marks, working with Craig LeBlanc. I think Charlene had referenced some signage earlier in this discussion that's going to be located at that spot, and at the moment, and I think based upon Mr. LeBlanc's history to date with his employees, he hasn't had a disabled employee, but we have talked about this, that should he down the road hire an employee that will be at that facility, that will be coordinated with the daily delivery of boats, based upon that gentleman's hours.
Would it, would it make more sense to have the accessible space at the southeast corner of that parking lot?
I think because of the current scenario with the restaurant parking out back and them not having immediate access to that parking lot during Mr. LeBlanc's business hours, we were using that space. So, if it's a blank space, you're probably, you could be more inclined to have somebody come utilize that space to run next door to the restaurant, which could potentially create a disturbance. So, by using the handicap space, knowing that it's for Mr. LeBlanc's building, it's more inclined to have that space empty during the daily business hours to not block the rear entrance.
Well, the proper term is accessible space, not handicap space.
I apologize. I apologize for that.
Any other questions? Craig, did you have something?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. One, just to confirm that there's no outside storage of any boats shrink wrapped or et cetera, and that all of the work, the work shrink wrapping a boat will be done inside the facility. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. There won't, there won't be any boats or equipment stored outside, and all of the work done on the boats will be inside the building.
Okay, thank you. My next question is regards the elevation of the building from front to rear. It's kind of hard for me to read the elevations, but I think the best I can tell, correct me if I'm wrong, the front, the elevation of the, about 17, and at the back of the building is 10 or 11. So, I assume when the construction is done, will that be raised up to the, the level of the front of the building, the rear portion filled in with fill?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any concern about drainage from raising that up about roughly five feet? Swales built, or how will that be handled? It appears that there'll then be a fairly steep drop-off from the rear of the property.
Stuart, do you want, Stuart, do you want to chime in? I'm not sure I fully understood the, the change in elevation in the slab is roughly to your point three to four feet, and that will only be, that will only be at the building. So, you'll have exposed foundation at those lower elevations, but you'll maintain outside the building footprint, the existing continuity of that landscape to continue to allow for the correct drainage.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is regards the driveway, if you will, on the west side that goes into the rear parking lot where the dumpster is. That looks to me to be pretty tight if there are three cars parked there for, and I'm assuming it's the kind of dumpster that a truck would have to go in and lift up the dumpster to dump it into their vehicle. How is it anticipated that the truck will maneuver around there to be able to do that? Or if that's not the case, then it's not an issue?
The dumpster back there would be able to be wheeled into the side path, if you will, that the truck could pick it up just by driving down.
So, the truck would drive in straight, they'd wheel it out, dump it, and then would back out of that sort of driveway into the front parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Harris. I have another question. I'm assuming that access to your facility for working on boats, shrink wrapping and so on, is to turn in from 28 into the beginning, the entrance to the new parking lot, and then pull to the, to the west and back into the large overhead door. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, basically, those, those parking spaces on the west side, the west side are going to have to be vacant when you are bringing boats in and out. Is that correct? I'm just trying to figure out how this is going to work, practically speaking.
Yes, the, the restaurant is only open at inner service, so our schedules are hopefully going to work with each other, where there won't be any restaurant customer cars parked there during the daytime hours when we're maneuvering the boats in and out.
So, you'll pull into the, to the driveway to the west of Villa Roma and around behind Villa Roma, and pull into your, into your driveway and back into the building. Is that correct?
No, we're going to pull in coming from the east, take a right-hand turn into the lot, and then make a horseshoe turn in front of the garage doors, and then pointing back towards 28, and then back in.
You're pulling into the wrong way on the one-way, even though it's only one-way when Villa Roma is using it. Is that correct?
No. No, there's an existing island, there's an entrance and exit to the, my lot. Pull in, coming from Harwich Port, let's say, take a right into the lot, take a long turn in front of the building, point, and then the truck would be pointing, the front of the truck would be pointing back towards 28, and then would be back in.
Yeah, I think I understand. It was, I guess my only concern was is that at those times when there may be cars parked in the Villa Roma lot, even though it may not be full, that it's going to take a lot of coordination to make sure that you can work a large podium and, and among the cars that are perhaps already parked.
Right, we won't be driving into the street.
Sorry, I can't hear you anywhere with the beep.
Yeah, I don't know what the, back then.
Caller nine needs some input.
Okay, that sounds better. So, any of the maneuvering with the trucks and trailers won't be on Villa Roma's property at all. It'll all be done on the, on my property. And I agree, there may be from time to time a car parked in a difficult spot, but we're counting on the opposite hours of operation taking care of that, where when I'm doing my maneuvering, they're not open, and then when they need, when they have the parking at night for the restaurant customers, I won't be there either.
Okay, I hope it works. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay, Joe.
Do I understand correctly that if someone were to come into the Villa Uh, it, it, do I understand correctly that, uh, if someone were to come into the Villa Roma parking lot, could they turn right and drive right over onto your, onto your parking area?
Yes, that, that's, what, there's a, a large open area, which is, is in use now in between, there's a, a cluster of trees on the property line heading north, and then there's a large opening, that's a free area that's a transition between both parking lots, yes.
I understand, I understand. And they have some right of use to that lot, don't they?
Yes, there's a, an easement in place that goes back several years, that I believe you have a copy of, um, yes, it's, it's based on.
It's without. Yeah. It's a shared. I have nothing for the match, Mr. Chairman.
Big body zone?
Yep, I'm done.
Thank you, Joe. Now, Bill, do, do I see you wanna talk?
Yes, I have, I have a question.
Please.
Um, on the elevation plans, we were just talking about, the handicap parking was gonna block the small door on one plan, but if you look at some of the elevation plans, the large door is on the right side of the building, not on the, on the left side. So what is the case?
The, the original plan was to have the, a small door to the west and then a larger door to the east. After reviewing the size requirements of, of the doors with the contractor, we're most likely gonna be moving ahead with three, um, three doors of the same size as the one that you see in, in the, the rendering. So there'll be three, uh, uniform doors going across the front.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything that shows the three doors.
Right, yeah, you, you probably have a picture that shows one small door, the vast and the large door on the eastern two-thirds of the front of the building.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, guys, this is, uh, Rob O'Neil from Gent Surf. The option with the three doors hasn't been presented to the board yet. Uh, what you're looking at right now with the larger door, uh, on the left, I'm sorry, on the right, is the, uh, the latest and greatest plan, uh, just looks like the civil drawings, the base wa- uh, never got updated, but, uh, as of right now, the latest is the larger door on the east side, the smaller door on the west side. And then, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, Alan Harbour is looking into the option of, uh, doing away with the larger door, that, that's twenty-eight by fifteen, and going with three, uh, same-sized doors, roughly fifteen by sixteen and change.
Okay, uh, and my other quest- my question, other thing I'd like to know more about is having the, uh, the curb blocks on the east side of the parking lot. I think I'd like to see that, if it's possible, as of Charlene's recommendation.
Yeah, and, uh, so this is, uh, we had spoke with, um, Craig and myself, and we're, uh, those guys from Alan Harbour are open to doing the, the wheel stops. Uh, we're under the impression with the conversation that I had with the town engineer, is that if we do the wheel stops on the east side, we won't need the requirement of a Cape Cod berm on the Tyler Lane side. Is that correct? Will that still be required?
I'm not sure. You'd have to ask Charlene or the engineer.
Okay.
Charlene?
Uh, you would need either or. You can do wheel stops, or you can do the berm. You don't need to do both.
We will, Craig, um, LeBlanc, um, I get, we, we've discussed that, we'll, we'll install the wheel stops.
Okay, so if, if in your draft decision, if the board is moving forward, um, you would need to change that condition, um, for, for your motion, when you get to that this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe.
Uh, m- my sense is that, that, that I would like to put this over to our next meeting, so that we can clean up some of these open-ended things. I, I, I'm sure they're all gonna be resolved, and I'm sure they're gonna be as the, uh, owner, uh, represents them, but I, 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 I just would rather see them all before, rather than, uh, approve the matter tonight with so many open-ended, uh, things going on.
Thank you.
One man's opinion.
Charlene?
Uh, just can we clarify which open-ended things? Um, I'm assuming you're talking now the wheel stops being shown on the plan, a more detailed landscape plan being provided, uh, the parking spaces, dimensions being shown on the plan, um...
The three doors.
The three doors.
As usual, Charlene, you're much... Excuse me. As usual, Charlene, you're more thorough than I am.
I try. Um, if, if they do wanna move forward with the three-door front, that would need to be done.
Yeah, wha- whatever finalized plans are gonna be, I, 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 in other words, I, I'm not opposed to it, and, and, and I would vote for it, uh, if we were to put it over to our next meeting, but I think they're out.
Right, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to give the applicant guidance on what he needs to show. I would hate for them to only do some of this, and you wanted to see all of it.
I, would you, would you, you should, uh, I think we should probably at this point hear some public comments to see if there's anything that will get added to that, or not? No?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Dave. I have a, another comment before we move to the public.
Okay, Dave.
Charlene, I, I'm not sure I understand the option be on the, uh, western parking spaces between, uh, wheel stops and a berm.
Eastern parking space. Eastern parking space.
I'm sorry?
It should be eastern parking spaces.
Well, if there, it, what about the western, uh, parking spaces?
There's a, there is a crossover there, so if there's, um, wheel stops there, you can't cross over.
Okay, I misunderstood. I, I thought you were talking about the west parking spaces. I apologize.
No, no, east.
Mary? You have to unmute.
Thanks, Duncan. Um, I don't know whether this question is really for the applicant or for Charlene. Um, you know, I'm still having issues, similar issues with the parking. How many parking spaces are required to be there for Villa Roma, and how many are necessarily required for this new use?
Great question.
I'm trying to find the parking calcs.
Sorry.
I selected to bring the big plan home. Oh, here we go, hold on. They need ten parking spaces for the Marina use.
And they have seventeen.
They have eighteen.
Okay, I missed one.
And, and how many of those have to be there for Villa Roma?
That I cannot answer.
So was that part of a special permit, or, or, um, something that was permitted through the planning board that we could find out?
Not at all. It's an agreement that Villa Roma has on, uh, with this property.
Okay, so, so it has nothing to do with their, with their, uh, use of, of their own lot? It's simply a private arrangement?
Exactly.
Okay. So I guess then my question is for the applicant, um, are all of the parking spaces necessary? Because in, in looking at it, it just looks overly crowded, knowing that you're going to need to do a turnaround and back those boats in, and, and, you know, and I fully understand that, um, you know, the sizes of the boats that you're going to bring here are gonna vary, but, you know, my colleague makes a good point with not only the accessible space, but frankly, with any of the spaces where people could be parking there, and it, it just seems that if one row of spaces isn't necessary, perhaps you leave them open, and it gives you a, um, a, a better way to back in and out, um, by keeping something clear. And, and I just don't know what your, what the total parking lot requirements are when considering the restaurant easement and your own use.
Well, the, the easement calls for sixteen parking spaces that the restaurant has access to, depending on the time of day, on my property.
Yep.
So we're, we're starting there, and that, that's, that's really what's driving the number of spaces on the plan. Um, ideally, like, like I said before, the, the, the hope is that because of the difference, we, we're accommodating the daytime parking needs of the restaurant with the three spaces in the, in the back for the prep staff, or, you know, whoever happens to be there. And then by the time, um, the restaurant needs space for the easement, I believe it starts at five o'clock, that's after my business hours. So we hope, hope to not bump into each other, to put it simply. And, um, will, will there be times where there may be a car in a, in a bad spot, I, I suppose, but, um, gonna, it'll, it'll be an ongoing dialogue with the restaurant. We've had some discussions with them already, and, and the hope is that we, you know, I, I'm not gonna have retail customers showing up, um, at this building. It's just primarily gonna be my employees, uh, parking there when, when we have boats to work on inside, so I'll, I'll be able to control that, the number of vehicles. And then, uh, during the, the, the restaurant hours, uh, if a vehicle is in, in a wrong spot and it's in the way with, uh, of, of moving a boat, I'll have to deal with that at the time, but I'm, I'm hoping the, the difference in hours will prevent that. And another, remember, the restaurant at least at this point is closed. Um, I think this year they closed December first and, and reopening, uh, early April. So my prime use of this building is when the restaurant will be closed, so I'm counting on that to help them as well.
Okay. So that's clearly what's driving your, the numbers of parking spaces. I just have one follow-up question for Charlene. You had mentioned the two spaces weren't gonna be able to be used, uh, because they would block access to the three in the back. Charlene, which two are those? I'm just not clear.
So the two on the westerly side of the, of the, the property at the, at the front, the two closest to the building.
Okay, in that, in that row that is immediately...
In the row with seven parking spaces.
In the row with seven, okay, perfect. So those first two, all right, thank you.
Are there any other members of the board? Arthur, do you have any questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right. Um, if there are no further questions from the board, I'd like to open this up to the public.
I just, I did mute caller nine. I don't know who you are, so if you are on the phone, you do need to hit, what is it? Star six, Mary, to unmute?
Yes.
Yes, I have a question. Uh, my name is Roger Grosskopf. I'm one of the owners and, uh, and the condos behind. Um, something new that came up to me here during this meeting, so, and I understand there's an elevation change of the property of probably three or four feet front to back where the building is, and is the twenty-four feet then the slab in the front? And so in the back, it'll be twenty-four feet plus whatever additional number of feet of foundation are below? So you'll have exposed twenty-seven or twenty-eight feet on the back?
That's correct.
That answer your question?
Yes, yeah. Look, it, it will all come back to our interest, or my interest, in the landscape plans here, and exactly what's gonna happen with trees and the like, uh, between the condo area and, and the building.
Right. Well, that's gonna be an issue, I think, that will have to be taken up with these, uh, further revisions on the, uh, specifications. Yes, Mary?
Thanks, Duncan. One other question. Charlene, um, there is, the stormwater runoff plan would still have to be done, and will, will that be anything that we'll need to reference in our decision, or no? Is that just separate with the town engineer?
That's separate with the town engineer. This does not trigger the stormwater permit requirement.
Okay.
On regulation, because you're not disturbing more than one acre.
Okay, so my follow-up question, I guess, is then to the applicants and to you, uh, when would revised plans be ready, and when would they be, um, looking, what new date would they be looking for, for a continuance?
Uh, if the next meeting is February ninth, we would need revised plans by, um, no later than noon on Monday for that meeting on the ninth. And then for the twenty-third, we would need plans by, hold on a second. Uh, the twenty, February twenty-third is the following meeting after that, and we would need revised plans by, uh, the twelfth of February.
I'm willing to get, I, I'd make a motion to move to con-
Wait, 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 Joe, can we hear from the applicant?
So, yeah, so through, through you, Mr. Chair, to the applicant, which date would they be able to, um, to have their revised plans by?
Uh, I, I guess if I could just, I was writing the, the list of, of items that we need to clean up for the next meeting. If I, if someone could just run through that again, so I make sure I have all of those, and then I can give you an idea of what day.
Yep. So if I understand it, um, completely, um, you would need to show where you're putting the wheel stops on the easterly side of the property for those parking, for those eight parking spaces. Uh, you would need to add the dimensions of the parking spaces on the plan. We would need to have a, uh, more formal landscape plan, showing what kind of buffering you're gonna be doing to the, to the rear of the property. And, um, whatever signage or indication you're gonna use for those two, uh, westerly parking spaces closest to the building, uh, what you're gonna use to, um, not have cars parking there, if, if that is indeed gonna be a problem with, with, uh, boat access and access to the back three parking spaces.
And then also-
And the elevation, if you're gonna go to, uh, three-door front.
And elevation.
Pardon, Dave?
I said they should be shown on the plans and the elevations.
And then all of it.
Yes.
Okay, um, I would-
Mr. Chairman? This is, I'll just hear from Mr. LeBlanc.
I, I would say, uh, to have all of that ready, uh, for the meeting on the ninth might be a little, um, aggressive. I, I could speak with the, my, my team on this tomorrow and get, get a sense, but it'll, it'll, if it, if it's not for the February ninth meeting, it'll be for the February twenty-third meeting for sure.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mary.
We need to continue to adjourn tonight, so we need to know if you're, if you're even hesitant on the ninth, I would suggest we do till the twenty-third.
Correct.
Because we don't wanna, we don't wanna then postpone again on the ninth.
This is Duncan, speaking up, speaking, uh, as Mr. LeBlanc's design and construction contractor, and we're confident we can get the information to you by Monday afternoon to allow us-
Monday, the eighth?
Yes.
It'd be Monday, the first, right?
It's next Monday, not Monday, the eighth, correct?
Right.
Correct. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to continue the matter till the February twenty-third. I'll sit, those, those seconds.
Well, I think they just said that they can make it on the ninth, right? Did I mistake that?
That is correct.
I heard, I heard what I'm gonna say. But I moved to put it over to the twenty-third, and I think I have a second.
Who's the second?
I was, Bill Spols.
Okay, Bill, comment?
If I could just get a little quick-
This is for the-
I just wanted to ask a little, get some clarification on the landscape plan, um...
You have a motion on the board, could you just hold on for a second?
Sure.
So, or-
Yeah, and I'll make a motion to continue it to the 9th.
All right, now we have to continue it to the 9th. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you for the second. Any other comments? Let's do a roll call. Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick. You got to unmute.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Mary Maslowski.
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Terrific, okay. We have a continuation until February 9th meeting. You had another comment, Mr. LeBlanc?
Actually, Craig, if you want to give me a call in the morning?
Okay.
I should be there by 8:30 tomorrow morning.
Okay. Just the only one thing I wanted to point out, it had come up at the ZBA meeting about some, there is some, landscaping was addressed there as far as some plantings across the back of the building along the northern property line.
Mr. Berry, point of order? The board has already continued the hearing?
Right.
So Craig, let's talk tomorrow?
Okay. Very good.
Folks, appreciate your input here. We'll see you back on the 9th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're continuing now with the public meeting. Do we have any new business before the board?
I got nothing.
I got nothing either. The old business, we have the Westarwich DCPC, which is design guidelines. I still owe copy to KICOT, and I've been solicited, getting that going as recently as yesterday. I have to pull together my notes. I've got my book right here, ready to rock and roll. So next meeting, I promise, we'll have that, that copy ready to go. We also have an item, is the discussion on possible zoning amendments and rules and regulations for 2021. It's been to item 3.b.b2, a separate section here. Charlene has given us a memo, or issued a memo with zoning amendments. Charlene, did you want to summarize and give us this conversation?
Well, we looked at this at the last meeting, but because of the late hour, we didn't really have a chance to discuss this. If the board, you know, I'm just looking for direction because any zoning amendments would have to get to the Board of Selectmen, even as a placeholder, by, I believe, the beginning of next month, February. So if there's things you would like me to work on for placeholders, I'm happy to do that. The floodplain bylaw, that does not need to be addressed at this town meeting, so that can be done later. There, I had brought up with regard to erosion control by law, and also changes to the MRL and MRL-1 parking requirement, which was inadvertently missed when you did all the changes to the multifamily. And then there's also rules and regulation items. The major of which is to see if you all want to have the rules and regs, which is section 400, or chapter 400, removed from the codifications. Pretty much ours are the only rules and regs that are actually in the codification. Board of Health rules and regs, conservation rules and regs are not part of the codified bylaws of the town. This allows for, you know, if it's not in there, a more frequent update, you know, those kind of things. It's entirely up to you how you want to do that. And other rules and regs changes, we can talk about another time. But to get this out of the code would require a town meeting vote.
Okay, do we have any commentary to begin with regarding to the zoning amendments?
This is Dan. I have a question for Charlene on erosion control.
Okay.
Is this proposed example, or is this example from another community? Has it been run by the town attorney to see if it passed muster?
It hasn't.
And if so?
No, we're still in the beginning. I've done nothing, just put something together. If you don't want to do zoning amendments, that's cool, that's fine. It's my ideas that have been kind of sitting out there for a while. But no, nothing has been presented to town council because it's premature on that. This is an example from another community.
Yeah, okay.
Mary?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I do think that we should, in a minimum, address item 3 with the parking setbacks. Just makes sense considering that if we missed it, we should make sure that it, that gets buttoned up. And I think to Charlene's point, item number one, the floodplain requirements are important to the community rating system, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to start that, even though it's probably not.
Well, I'm already looking behind the scenes on that one, Mary.
Okay. Because you're thinking what, maybe fall special town meeting?
Actually, I don't think it needs to be done until 2022.
Okay.
So the language proposed then, Charlene, for number three, the parking language, is this the kind of thing that can go straight in that you have?
No, no, no. This was a quick, off the top of my head kind of thinking thing. I just put some quick thought into it. If the board does want to have a zoning amendment, we can, I do believe they're going to allow for placeholders. So if we say we, you know, the board says they want to have a zoning amendment relative to parking in the MRL and MRL-1, you know, we can do a placeholder for that.
Do we have any kind of a consensus on, I would like to go ahead with that?
I can.
Yeah, I agree.
We just need to get the dimensions.
Yeah, why don't we, is it something, we do need dimensions, Charlene? Or is it something where the language can just be a little more open textured, or we have to tack it down with straight, you know, number of feet?
Well, I think in the example, there are dimensions included there.
Right.
But again, this isn't, this isn't it right now. This still needs a little more discussion and thought.
Okay.
Put it as a placeholder, as somebody suggested, and then work on it over the next couple of meetings.
Yep.
Let's do that. We can put this into new business for next meeting with FBO satisfactory, with a couple of proposed language?
Not a, not a problem. Any, any thoughts or anything on getting the rules and regs out of the codification? We actually had to do a little investigating to see how and why it got put in there, and it wasn't a pretty story that we ended up finding, so.
Charlene, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does the town administrator make sure that you get compensated for these days that you work?
I get paid by the hour, Joe.
Okay, great, great. I just want to make sure you were getting paid.
Oh, heck yeah. I wouldn't be sitting here if I wasn't.
I know you.
Do you want us to keep talking, Charlene? Charlene, do you want us to keep talking?
Nope.
Actually, Charlene, I had a quick question. What do other towns do when, have they taken away the certified mail?
We're the only ones who do that.
Oh, okay.
How are we assured then that the abutters have been notified?
Honor system. I mean, you know, if, if the town isn't a butter to a property, they need to mail one to the town.
I was thinking about the innocent.
Charlene, all the places that I've worked always required that the certifies were, were delivered as proof of meeting.
Not in Cape communities at all.
Well, it's a, it's a requirement of the statute, is it not?
No.
It's not a requirement in the statute.
Nope, we double-checked that.
Okay.
I mean, if it's 521 bucks, you know.
I think it's only fair to a butter to get that.
Yeah, people see it and probably just toss it.
Well, some people won't even, won't even sign for certified mail. They refuse to.
Yeah.
And we have had people in the past say, "I never got notified." We look back and it's like, "Yeah, you're right, you didn't," because you didn't accept the certified mail.
Are we the ones that are sending the certified mail, or are we requiring the applicant to do it?
The applicant's doing it.
Yeah, I think we should just continue with the certified from the applicant.
I agree.
I agree as well.
I mean, no other town's doing it. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, but with this protection of the, for the abutters, I mean, it's, it's an unfair, I had something happen to me this past year that I never got my notifications, and the one I had without, without the certified letters. So it's, I think it's a great protection for the abutters.
Yep.
So, Charlene, is it just our requirement and our rules and regulations? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
I mean.
It's not state mandated or anything like?
Nope. The applicant should be encouraged to certify mail?
I just know, I just know that if I was in a butter, I mean, there's a difference between certified is more expensive than, well, no, registered is more expensive than certified, you know?
Conservation is the only one that requires, by statute or law, that it be a certified mailing.
I'm sorry?
Conservation is the only one that I'm aware of that requires a certified return receipt mailing. Zoning Board of Appeals, the town notifies the abutters for zoning board of appeals, and it's done via regular mail.
I was just going to ask, could, could change our practice to do it by regular mail? And at least that way, we, we know our practice, our written procedures are, that we would notify, or that we'd have the applicant notify the abutters by regular mail, but not incur the expense of certifying back and the green card and all that kind of stuff. And just, we fulfill, or we've asked the applicant to fulfill something that I agree with the people who said, "If I'm in a butter, I would expect some kind of notification." I would hope for some kind of notification.
So you'd hope to be notified by the town or by the applicant?
By the applicant.
I don't think, I don't think the town wants to take the time to do the notifications.
Right.
So continue with the certification?
Or just do a regular mailing and assume it gets to them?
The applicant is required, under our regulations, to notify the abutters for anything from the planning board right now, but it is via certified mail. What I'm suggesting, or what I've noted here, is we've had a lot of complaints from folks who are applicants, who, you know, just find the fee to be exorbitant and excessive.
Well.
Well, it's nothing that we can change today. We can't take a vote today and change it. We have, we'd have to go through rules, rule setting to change any, any rules and regulations, so.
You'd have to do a public hearing, note of paper, etc.
They're on the best.
I'm, I'll be honest, I'm very surprised because any place I've been, we always had, we were always required to do certified return receipts and proof of abutters notices. So surprises me that it's only our rules and regs. But that was a while ago, so.
I have a memory of having to turn them in at the hearing.
One of the ironies is, if you do a special permit before the zoning board of appeals, there's no certified abutters notification. If you do a special permit before the planning board, it's certified notification.
I think that's agreeable.
I agree.
But, hey, I'm just your interim town planner for.
All right, well, that's not something we're going to be able to solve tonight, but if we have the new business on the parking language on the next public meetings, new business section, I think we'd be in good shape. Do we have any other business before the board this evening?
I just wanted to give you a quick report from CPC. So we're going to, we're going to meet tomorrow night, I'm sorry, on Thursday night, rather, at 6:00 PM. I expect that we will start voting on our 2021 applications. Anyone's interested, the meeting should be broadcast. So we have quite a number of applications. I want to say there were 16. One has been rescinded, but we should be voting on possibly 15 separate applications, and they vary from historic to open space, a lot of recreation, which comes under our unfunded, our undesignated funds, and community housing. So if anyone's interested, I can answer questions for you, or feel free to watch on Thursday night.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe?
Yeah, I'm the board's representative to Capitol Olay, and, excuse me, we turned in our Capitol Olay plan a couple of weeks ago, just so you want to know.
Thank you very much. Much obliged. Okay, so we have a movement, motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
In a second?
Second.
In a second. Roll call vote. Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Oh, sorry. Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowski.
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.